... County Regional Planning and Commission Order, if you stand with the please, I will leave the prayer, Richie lead the pledge. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the beauty of the day and the beauty of the seasons, and we thank you for all the blessings that you continue to bestow upon us. We pray, Heavenly Father, tonight, will you be with us in this meeting and would be fair and just to everyone concerned and just continue to be with us, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Call, roll, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
President.
We have a quorum.
All right, do you, Codes Department, David, do you have anything?
No, must report John's favor, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything withdrawn or deferred?
Uh, no, sir, nothing withdrawn or deferred.
Okay, item submitted for site plan approval, McCormick Truck, we submit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll recall at the last planning commission meeting, we reviewed a couple of Platts for these properties, the McCormick property. As you recall, these were originally approved back in 2008, the Platts, and also the site plan. However, the approval at that, since that time has lapsed, and so they're bringing it back for reapproval, which was the case with the Platts a couple of weeks back, and is now the case with the site plan. This was originally on the agenda for the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, however, they were still working out some of the details with the landscape plan, but that has now been resolved. As far as the comments are concerned, it appears to meet the conditions and everything that we have placed, or that we, when we did our review, it seems to have met those comments that we did place. Just a couple of things for discussion. First of all, one of the conditions on the conditional use permit was that the construction of the building meet the Smyrna design guidelines, so that'll just be something that during the, prior to permitting, we'll ensure that that is taken care of. The other has to do, again, with the turn lanes on West Jefferson Pike going onto McCormick Court. There's been a lot of discussion about this with the state, with TDOT. Staff's understanding at this point that, provided that McCormick Court will be a county road, built the county standard, and then taken over and maintained by the county, that the state will be able to install the turn lanes along West Jefferson Pike as part of the project. So with that understanding, staff is comfortable with the site plan approval. We would require some sort of verification of both the Smyrna design guidelines as well as the right, the turn lane issue prior to any building permits being issued. So I would just make, if you do decide to approve this, any comment, or any approval will be subject to those comments. The landscape plan that is included with this packet that you have on your tables, it's on the last page. There's quite a bit of existing landscaping on the property, and they've applied for credit for those. As you can see, along the buffer on the, I guess that'd be the eastern side, and also the south side, even a portion of the western side of the property is where the heaviest buffer would have to be. As you can see, they've had a survey, go out there and locate a number of these trees, and as far as the buffering requirement is concerned, this does appear to meet the criteria, with one exception, that being the shrubbery requirement. Now, because of the fact that they have so many trees there, we do feel that this meets the intent of our ordinance, the regulations that we have, and this could qualify under an alternate landscape plan. And so we would just ask that you approve it, to approve it with that condition in there, that this meets the alternative landscape plan criteria. With that, there are representatives here with McCormick Trucking, so I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, see anyone have questions on this?
It seems to me, I remember when this came to this first time, we asked the developer to leave some of those trees to protect the neighbors, and they did work with us, and didn't we ask them to set back the, to leave the fence row that was there? So I remember some discussion about that a neighbor didn't want that pushed down, or something. I remember, it's been a few years ago now, but it's out in my district, but I would say that they did, I remember a conversation in working with us and not taking out some of the trees they could have.
Right.
And helping a neighbor out right there.
Yeah, I do believe that that was the case, and it looks like that's what they're doing here. Again, meets the intent of the ordinance that we have, and they are identified a number of trees that they're asking for credit for, so to be able to keep that credit, they would need to keep those trees there.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Fire hydrant issue, was there a fire hydrant issue, or they were getting one, or they were proposed one, or?
There's, if you look on the first page of the site plan, Mr. Sandlin, you'll see at the very end of McCormick Court, close to the property, you'll see there's a proposed fire hydrant for CUD on the property. So I, that, they've taken care of that issue.
Yeah, I see proposed right there, they still hadn't gotten that in yet then?
No, and of course, all they've really done out there at this point is some grading work. So I would anticipate when they get more heavily into construction, they'll extend the utility lines.
Okay.
Doug, do you have a timeline on the turn lane? Have you talked to TDOT?
Uh, I have not personally talked with them about any kind of a tentative timeline, but again, that's part of what I was referring to earlier, is that we'd want some sort of verification, I'm sorry, my microphone's not wanting to stay put here, some kind of verification from them before we'd issue permits, as far as timing and everything is concerned, because we still feel as staff that it's important to have those lanes in before this business begins operation, and the applicant's fully aware of that and understands that, so.
Okay, other questions, comments? A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, attention to staff comments.
Second, have a motion approved, second with all staff comments. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, Doug, Terry Hertz subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This next plat, it's on our agenda today, was also, was also deferred from our last planning commission meeting. This is the Terry Hertz subdivision property located on Leanna Road. It's located on the north side of Leanna Road, the applicant's proposing to subdivide the existing tract, which is 27 acres and the four separate lots, two of which will be accessed by private easement, which is why it has to be brought before us tonight for a plat. There is a copy of the plat on your table. This does come to fore us under some unusual circumstances, the lots were previously created by deed, which if they all had their own access easement, would have been acceptable, but since there's one access easement accesses a couple of the properties, that requires the platting requirement, that is why it's here for us today. It appears that while, there is a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of the property, however, the property, the properties further in the back would not be within 1,000 feet of this hydrant, so they are asking for a waiver to that provision. So again, and there is also, the long-range transportation plan actually does show the improvement and extension of Leanna Road, kind of running through this property, beyond the eastern side of the property. However, right now, there's nothing on our radar screen that would even indicate that that's something we're looking at at this point, and we're also in the process of hopefully getting together a request for proposals to update our major thoroughfare plan through the MPO out of Nashville, and that's something we'll look at at that time, whether or not to keep that improvement there with some of the other road improvements in that area. So with that, we did do our review of this, it has met our, the comments that we asked them to do. The only outstanding issue at this point is the fire hydrant waiver for those lots in the back. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions? Any questions or comments on this one? To meet all requirements, Doug?
With the exception of the fire hydrant waiver, yes, sir.
With the exception of fire hydrant waiver.
I think you can make one motion, just, you could just make approval along with the fire hydrant waiver, I think that'd be okay.
Do you want?
Sorry.
My name is Robert Lewis, I work in the planning department for the city of Murfreesboro, and Mr. Demossi did say that this is on the long, and the major thoroughfare plan for Rutherford County and Murfreesboro, and he's right, there's no heartburn about this right now, and I don't know if the MPO in Nashville are, they're gonna change any routes along in there. We just wanna make sure that if this is platted, development in the future needs to take into consideration that this, there may be a road going through several of these properties, and maybe a possibility of some landlocked lots if it's not developed properly. So I just, we just wanna make it on record that this is a kind of a sensitive area.
But as this is presented, the city does not have a problem with it?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. All right. Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with a fire hydrant exemption.
Okay, do you have a second? Motion, second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion. One, no? Have a no? All right, motion, motion carries. Resounding request, Larry Davis.
Thank you, Chairman Lynch. This application is located at 3534 Anvil Road. The property is currently zoned R-15 with a request to go to agricultural services. The applicant is proposing to build a wine production facility, winery, and a health spa. The wine production facility would come online first in 2012 to process the 12 acres of grapes that are currently planted on the property. And then in 2014, the winery, which would contain a tasting room, gift shop, bistro, and the health spa would be added to the property. The applicant will also like to host the occasional special event, such as a wedding or reception, something to that effect. The projected hours of operation are from 12:30 PM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. Now, the applicant states that the wine production facility will have a large cellar where the wine will be able to age and ferment. Something to keep in mind, the Rocky Fork Creek does run along the northern boundary of this property, and so a portion of this property from this map here is in the AE flood zone. So any cellar structure would require some special engineering, which is something that can be done through our codes department, but just something to be aware of. The facilities will be accessed from Anvil Road, which will require a commercial access permit from TDOT, which will be a review process in itself. We were curious as to the traffic count in front of this property, so we did place traffic counters out there last week, and got an average daily count of about 5,500 vehicles per day passing through this area in front of the property. 5,500, which is pretty much in between the two traffic counts I included in the report, one was close to I-24 and one was close to Burnt Knob, so traffic does increase the further north on Anvil Road that you get. Now, consolidated utility is currently replacing the four-inch water line on Anvil Road with the 12-inch water line, and once that project is finished, there will be a fire hydrant actually placed on this property, so water and fire protection is adequate. The applicant has identified a soil area to be used as a septic system for the, for the projects. It's unclear at this time whether the soils will be able to support all of the various uses he's proposed, that's something he'll have to work with the state's groundwater division to determine. Now, in addition to that, he'll also have to get a license to operate a winery from the Tennessee Alcohol Beverage Commission, and that has to be renewed annually, and that's the process that would ensure that all state regulations are being met. Now, the comprehensive plan does show this area as being located within the Stewart Creek Village Neighborhood Center. Honestly, this proposal is not the use we were considering when we originally designated it as a village neighborhood, however, if designed properly, this could be an asset to the area. Since the county has not had time to adopt design standards as of yet, and since this is located within the Smyrna urban growth boundary, we feel it'd be appropriate to apply the Smyrna review design standards to this project. Another benefit of this project is it would leave a significant portion of the property in a natural or cultivated state, which would add to the open area, open space of this area. Let's see. The area is predominantly zoned residential, the closest commercial is located in the town of Smyrna, which is about a mile to the north on Anvil Road. Staff does have some concerns with the application as it is presented. We do want to see architectural renderings to demonstrate that the buildings will, can be compatible, compatible with the residential area. The applicant will also need to come up with a lighting and a screening plan that will minimize any negative impacts on the neighbors, and I do believe requiring the project to meet design guidelines from Smyrna will help address those issues. You'll find in front of you a letter on your tables, which was given to us by one of the residents across the street, had some concerns with some of the more commercial aspects of the facility, but actually was in favor of the winery itself. So let me just give you a quick view of the property. There is a small house currently on the property, and also, as I mentioned, CUD is doing a waterline project, so the heavy equipment and the displaced soil is actually CUD's waterline project. But here's Anvil Road. That was all close to the road, then we drove back further onto the property, roughly where that star is, and took some more pictures, so you could actually see the 12 acres of grapes that are currently on the property. And you can see the creekside subdivision, which is what backs up to the property. I believe the applicant has a presentation he'd like to give, and I'd also be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions before we do open a public hearing?
Elizabeth, where's the, we see the sole site location, and then we also see the parking lot location, where's the building site location?
Well, from the concept plan the applicant submitted, oh, that's not right at all. Sorry about that. You can see, the one is loosely where the proposed wine production facility would be, and then the two is where the actual winery, and then the three is where the spa. So I don't believe the applicant has very specific sighting standards yet, it's probably something they need to establish during the site plan phase.
Okay.
But they'd be all around the parking lot.
Okay. And so where it's got the grape vines now, is that all of their site for that, or do they have that compacted yet? And that might be a question for him yet, I guess.
Probably a better question for him, but I do believe he plans on planting more grapes, but the applicant will be able to answer that.
One other question, did you find out anything about the, we're trying to right now, the county with the city of Smyrna, put a light in, or have it in, before the actual high school is, goes into effect, which would be the fall of '13, I guess, when schools start on the high school right there, but at Morton Road. So is, did you find out anything on that?
No, I'm not sure.
No, I, no, we can't say we did, I apologize, that wasn't something that we really looked into, about the, where that status was on that, that's something we can find out pretty, pretty easily, I think.
Okay, so with y'all's determination off the, the traffic count then right now, then it would require or wouldn't require a turn lane, or?
It will have to go through the state, TDOT's review process, because it is a state route. I'm really not sure exactly what type of traffic counts a winery would bring to a site, I think it would fluctuate, sometimes it might be a car or two, and sometimes it might be a whole busload of people. It's, it's hard to say, but they will have to go through that review process to determine whether or not some type of traffic improvement or safety is required on Anvil Road.
Okay, like I said, I know this is just the zoning and, and everything right now, but it kind of folds into the whole mix of, you know, dealing with the traffic on this state route.
Okay. Anyone else, questions or comments before we open it up to a public hearing?
Mr. Sandlin, have you had any calls on this?
I've only had one, and it was with the, some, it was a lady in the subdivision right behind him, just inquiring, as far as saw the sign and wanted to know, you know, what was, what was happening. So it wasn't a positive or a negative, it was just a inquiry, basically.
Same with our office, we received a few phone calls that were just wondering what was going on with the property, and I received two phone calls that were in opposition.
Okay, anyone else, comments, before we open up the public hearing? Okay, we will open it up for a public hearing, would the, anyone just to speak?
Applicant's presentation.
The applicant's present, would you like to make your presentation? Yes.
I'm afraid of New Year's, I don't know quite where to stand, we're speaking. I'm Larry Davis, I'm owner of the property at 3545 Almaville Road. Do I need to push a button?
No, just talking to the microphone.
I'm owner of the property at 3545 Almaville Road, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come to you and speak to you about things I wanna do with the vineyard that's established there in the area. The name of the vineyard would be Davis Vineyard, and, this is our present logo, this will be the logo on our, on our wines that we produce. Presently, we have 4,000 vines growing, and according to Department of Agriculture and our consultant, Tony, Tony Johnston, at Department of, at Milton City, Milton City State University, who's in charge of agriculture, that they're doing well. We've had our first harvest, it was a small harvest, that was to be expected after the second year. Next year, in October, we will have our major, our first major harvest, which will, which will, which will produce from all 4,000 vines. This year, we're planting another 6,000 vines that will go, and I'll show you exactly where we're gonna put those. Here, you'll notice that the entire area is surrounded by double row of trees and a creek that comes by on the north side, and all of the property is bordered by these trees, and we will have vineyard vines, you can see some, you can see our first group right here. This will extend down to here, and come across the front, then down the side, and down the back. So each, all the area will be surrounded by vines and double row of trees, mostly evergreens, so that very little of it will be, you know, will be, has, we feel, to the neighbors. Then, this is a picture of the tree lands, all of this property is tree land, septic area is right here. And this, this area, the septic area, has been soil sampled, and Holstland Steel is developing the, the area, is helping us with the engineering portion of it, to make sure that we have the appropriate septic area for it. This is, this right here is approximately two acres where parking will be located. And this is the beginning of the area where we want to put the factory, and that's, this is where we want to start on as soon as possible. We're asking for permission for the zoning change, so that we can at least get started on producing the factory. You have to remember that we have a crop of vines that are gonna be ready to pit in October of next year, we want to have our factory, our factory built and equipped for that point in time. This is a picture of a typical processing factory that you'll find for wine processing, seed processing. It's very tall, almost a two-story building, basically because the bats are so tall. And where we accommodate that is that we decided to put most of this portion underground, so we are, we have a natural rise that's right in the back there where we're replacing our, our factory, so that most of this will be underground, you have a one-story portion that's sitting on top. What we're gonna do with that one story section is design it so that it looks more like a home, as opposed to anything else. So you'll see this part on top, underground, you'll have the larger section that would have the factory, the processing area, and storage. This, if you can just kind of imagine here where both of these trees are, is approximately where we're gonna have both the winery and then the spa. This is, presently, this is what we feel is what we would have structured the winery. Notice we tried to figure so that it looks like a residence, and we figured if we had, if we had to keep it as a residence, that it would, it would enhance the area more than anything else. So this basically is the winery, and the spa will be more, look at it, this, this way. Okay? The most important, and this, this is another building that was, type that was considered, but we think we're going very first with as far as the winery. Our time schedule is, like I said, the construction period, 2012, and then the wine production, 2013, in April 2013, construct the winery and the spa. In April 2014, the winery hopefully will open, and in October, the spa will be open. Thank you for, thank you again for allowing me to make a presentation. Any questions?
Yes, your spa and your application here, is all that inclusive, or will be all under one roof, so to speak, or?
Yes, the winery will accommodate all of the, the other portions, i.e. the bistro, the, the reception areas, that sort of thing.
So if a tourist come in, then they could come into the winery, and then they could go left to the spa, or right, or whatever, to the back, and then, and so forth, and so on, to you, other, other things?
Exactly right.
And you said, a wedding chapel or something, is this like a courtyard out back, or something out front?
Outside and front, will be a white, large white gazebo, which will be used as a wedding chapel.
Okay, all right. And, and another question I have for you then, is the, like over in some wineries, I don't know if they, if Mont Eagle, or Crosshole, or any of those do it, but like over in Ariington, they, they're having actually concerts, I don't know if it's because, you know, it's a past musician that did that, and they, they have the connections or whatever, but, and like I said, I've only had one call on it, but that could bring some concern to the residents beside you and behind you with these two subdivisions right here, if there's gonna be loud music and stuff going on and, and everything, you know, for we hours of the night, or parties, or whatever, you know, so do you?
We don't anticipate any of that. The other thing is that, like I said before, with the trees, trees outlining, I mean bordering the facility, and with the vines bordering the facility, because there's no, there's more than, there's more than 400 feet of distance between our border and where we will have any of the buildings. So there shouldn't be a noise problem.
Well, I saw that, the timeframe, so everything's gonna quit by eight, where'd I say that at? It was seven days a week, 12:30 to 8:00 PM.
Yes.
So everything is done by 8:00 PM?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Summer, winter, spring, fall, it's, it's done?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I know sometimes, special events and, you know, whatever, parties or whatever, may need to go longer than that, but you're done at 8 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else, questions?
The majority of your product, are you looking at it also to be maybe shipped more so than sold on premises?
During the first, if you, if you notice, we will be producing wine in 2013. Between the time of producing the wine and before the winery gets started, most of ourselves will be by the local package stores and, and sales.
Because I noticed that the factory and your processing, like a pretty good-sized facility, that you'll be building there, like they'll be more towards shipping?
Yes.
Is what your goal is to go there?
Yes.
How many more vines do you think that you can expand your vineyard?
Well, we, we can, we can utilize 30 acres for the, for the vineyard. We have 37 and a half acres, right now, the structures and parking lots, that sort of thing, will take up approximately seven, seven and a half acres, and then we use 30 acres. So 30 acres will probably produce more than, than 15,000 vines.
You have 4,000 now, so.
Yes.
Another question I had is the, the traffic in and out of there, what's your, what's your, your study been on your traffic coming? Is it more in the summer, more in the spring, more in the winter? You're gonna be between 8:40 and 24, basically, so the traffic coming there, what's it gonna do to our, to our area out there, and what do you expect?
Well, you know, the, yeah, but you have considerable traffic there now.
I'm talking about coming to your facility, what's it gonna bring?
And the state, state will be widening, widening the, the road, so, you know, I don't anticipate, you know, a huge increase, but I don't know anything about that, sort of thing, you know? If there is an increase, I'm sure, you know, the widening by the state, and if we put, we make lanes, we have enough space, we can make lanes so it can peel off fairly easy from the, from the, from Almaville Road.
So your, your, the, the drive for your business is not the sales on site, even though you will have sales on site, you will have consumption on site, as far as the taste testing part?
We have taste.
But as far as, your sales not based on what you do there, your internet sales, local sales, wherever you're selling to, that's, that's where your sales are gonna come from.
Yes, at least for the first two years, you know? And then... And then, uh, then, then we want, but we want the place to be a showplace and a tourist attraction. So that's part of it as well, having, having fifty companies.
So will you have, uh, any type of trucking systems or anything of that sort? Or how will you be shipping? Once you manufacture them, how, how will you be shipping?
Yeah, there, there, we will ship this. But it, there'll be, uh, there'll be local, local pickup, and then we have FedEx.
Okay.
We'll ship them.
Mr. Davis, how many people will you employ?
Initially, we will, we employ six to twelve. When we have the full facility going, we expect at least thirty people employed.
On daily basis?
Yes.
On daily basis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, will you ship grapes in, or are you gonna just process your grapes?
Our facility is a little bit different, because we are organic. And we produce an organic wine. So, uh, we're about the only ones that do it, so we cannot, we, chances are we won't be shipping very many grapes from other growers. It'll be our, our grapes, because it'll be our organic wines. And our, our, and our logo will stay in as organic wine. There will be, there will be, there will be the grapes that we produce, will be processed into the wine and then sold, shipped.
So you're using your grapes that you'll be able to employ that many people on a yearly basis? Without, without shipping grapes in, you're gonna be able to employ that many people?
Yeah, based on, yeah, yes, yes. The, uh, each, uh, each vine produces, uh, uh, produces five gallons of wine. So that's a lot of wine to crush and process.
It is.
And, and so, you know, that, you know, that's one of the things that, uh, you know, that the business plan works with.
Okay. Anyone else? Mike?
Okay, uh, it's a neat concept, first of all. Uh, I think that would really be a neat asset out there in that part of Smyrna. But a, a couple of things that just are a red flag that I want to make sure you're clear of. It, it says in our, uh, agenda that a lot of this land is located in the flood zone. Yet, you're talking about an underground cellar.
No, uh, if I could have a picture.
As soon as it starts up, we will, absolutely.
There's problems with it, but they're working on it.
Okay. That, that scared me to death, except we had a flood and we didn't flood at all. But by the same token, by the same token, there's a, a large rise.
Okay.
Up ten feet behind the area that the parking lot is, that's where we're gonna, that's where we, we will put the, uh, the facility. And we will come down with it.
Uh, um, if Huddles and Steele's doing their site plan, I'm sure they will take that into account, but I just wanted to make sure you were aware that,
Yes.
that was a, a flood potential. We, we've kind of asked this question a couple of times a different way. But besides what you call the factory, are there other outbuildings that will be for container storage or trucking, landscaping vehicles, things like that?
The, 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 the factory itself will, uh, will be large enough to house the equipment and storage.
Okay, so there won't be pallets, outside pallet storage or anything, container storage, anything like that? Alright, and last question, and, and, um, the planning commission is not in the business to, to make suggestions about how to run a business, but I, I want to make sure you're comfortable with that eight P.M. closing, cause for what you're wanting to do, that sounds like an early close on a Friday or Saturday night. So I, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, you know.
For you.
That's, our, our thoughts is that, uh, if we do it, uh, do it at eight thirty close, that it will work out fine. If not, I guess I'll be here again requesting a change.
Well?
Uh, you, this might be a question for Doug. Uh, you mentioned the state's gonna widen Almaville Road.
Yes.
We're approximately three years away, according to your timeline, to be everything up and running.
Yes.
Fall of two thousand fourteen. Where is Almaville Road? Is that on the state's immediate plans? I know it's on a future plan, but?
It's not even on their radar screen right now. We've, we've seen their, uh, their program, at least for the next few years, and it's not on there now. With the state, that can change from year to year, but at this point, it, it's not, uh, one of their immediate priorities. So I wouldn't anticipate that being done prior to the construction, if this is approved, I wouldn't anticipate that.
I was through there just a couple nights ago and saw the equipment right there, C U D's putting in a borderline. And I thought that was just a standard expansion, but then they're not moving a line for the road at this point in time.
I don't believe so, Ms. Woods here from C U D.
It'll be nice when that road is through there, it'll probably be five lanes, a continuous turn lane, I would think, but we're a ways away from that road.
Yes, we are.
From what I understand, it's not funded. Uh, now, the, the only part that they've actually done is the prep work of moving lines, moving, uh, water lines, uh, electrical lines and stuff, and then widening those bridges. I think there's about three or four on Almaville Road that they've, they've done.
They have improved certain bridges, that's, that's correct. And you can tell when you look at that map, just even right there, you can see how the right of way gets wider as you start getting closer to the bridge, as you go north on, on Almaville Road. It really widens out right through there, so they have quite a bit of right of way through there already for the bridge. But, uh, you know, I don't think they've even started purchasing right of way on the rest of the road. Sorry. Yes, sir. That, yeah, the red, basically the red line versus Almav- is that what you're asking? That, that's, that's the, that's Almaville Road right there, that red line? Uh, yeah. Right to the nor- right to the, right to the, the top of where it says Almaville Road, that's, you can kind of see, there's a little break right there, and that's, that's the bridge right there.
Okay, other questions? Comments? Yes, sir.
Doug, do we actually have a agricultural services, and if so, what's listed under that?
Well, there, there is an agricultural services zone, it's not something we see very often. And similar to the rest of our zones that we currently have, there are no permitted uses by right, with the exception of maybe some agricultural type, uh, activity, if it's over five acres. Kind of like what he's doing now, the grapes, just growing the grapes, he, I mean, he's fine to continue that. But there's not any permitted uses beside everything else, it's just like any other zoning district we have, it's conditional use permanent.
With the spa and the events, or the health spa and the weddings and stuff like that, is that the closest zoning we should be looking at, though? In other words, what's, next month, what's to keep somebody?
And, and I guess the unique thing with our zoning resolution is the fact that it really doesn't matter what the zoning is. I mean, if it were a services zone, it'd still be looking for a conditional use permit for the activities he's proposing. Uh, because of the, the winery and the agricultural activity with the grapes and that kind of thing, we just felt it, it fit better under that than it would under maybe just a pure commercial type zone. But if you would like to look at a different zoning classification, that's certainly something that you can recommend. But as staff, we felt it fit more closely with that than it did some of the others.
Thank you very much.
Alright, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, Mr. Davis. One more.
Mr. Davis, I just have a general question. Is this your first vineyard, or do you have experience in a development like this, or have you partnered with someone who does? I'm just curious.
I'm a dentist, I know nothing about it. Well, I've got, I've got, I've got good people around me. I have, uh, a grounds manager, and like I said before, Tony Johnston from Department, from, uh, Milton Tennessee State University, who, uh, who, uh, is, is working with me as a, as a consultant. And, um, the people at Department of Agriculture and Extension Services is working with me.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks, sir, we may have you back.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for or against this? Still got public hearing, does anyone else wish to speak for or against this? Anyone else wish to speak for or against? No one else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any more questions, Steve?
No, I, I think it's a, you know, agricultural service, which, uh, kind of explains itself. A couple of questions I've had, I've asked him, like I said, from the, uh, the public comments, have really been low about it. I think it'd be an asset to the community and, uh, and to Rutherford County, bring in some tax dollars. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the recommendation, staff recommendations.
Second.
Alright, have a motion, have a second. All for the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carries. Alright, when, what's his, what's his next step, Doug?
I believe the next step, well, the next step is the Board of Commissioners meeting, which I believe is November the seventeenth.
November seventeenth, Board of Commissioners meeting. November seventeenth, Board of Commissioners meeting, Mr. Davis.
Doug, if we could, uh, before that, or before that meeting, if we could know the status then of Almaville Road from the state?
Yes, sir.
Uh, as far as detailed, uh, the plan, if they do have a date or as far as letting the bids and all that?
We'll do it.
That'd be helpful. And then also that, uh,
Traffic light.
Maybe the turn lane and the traffic light?
Yes, sir.
There for the problem.
We'll do it.
Okay. Doug, staff reports?
Yes, uh, just a real, uh, just to want to give a brief introduction here. Uh, as you know, we've been working, uh, very diligently on the revised zoning resolution ordinance, wherever you want to call it, at this point. And as part of that, also the zoning map, uh, is the second part of that project. And today, we have, uh, there goes the projector again. Uh, unfortunately, we're having some technical difficulties with the projector, but just, uh, pretend that those boards right there are actually on the screen right now. And you can kind of, kind of follow along with that, I apologize for that. Well, basically, what we have done is, uh, as staff, we've worked through the existing zoning map, kind of taken a look at what we have, and based on, uh, what's currently on the ground as far as uses are concerned, and looking at our new zoning map and, or our proposed zoning map and our new zoning districts, and try to come up with how we think that that current uses fit within our existing, I'm sorry, how the existing uses fit within the proposed zoning map. Uh, what you see before you, and a copy of this is on our, on our website, we just put it there today. So we, we encourage comments, uh, people to take a look at it, download it, whatever you want to do. Basically, what, and I wish I had the projector up, but, uh, essentially what you're seeing here is what we've done is we've taken our comprehensive plan, and the, the two colors that you see on there predominantly are the yellow and the orange. Uh, the orange is what we're calling RM, which is residential medium density, which is essentially the same thing as our R fifteen today, allow about three units an acre. The yellow area that you see around that, of course, if you recall, in the comprehensive plan, uh, recommended the suburban belt model, and that was the, uh, particular option that the planning commission did adopt. That yellow belt around it, uh, of course, the orange being the suburban belt, the yellow belt around it being, uh, what's called the RL, which is a residential low density, uh, which would allow one unit an acre. That really forms the, the basis, if you will, of the plan. And the boundaries that we set for that, as you can see, really come from the comprehensive plan. Uh, we tried to take those areas that were recommended for the residential low density, put those in the, in the yellow for the low density, and then the RM for the medium density, and put that in there. Now, that being said, you know, of course, the comprehensive plan, the map itself, uh, is not meant to be parcel specific. Uh, so the, the edges of those can kind of be a little fuzzy, if you will. Uh, there are some existing subdivisions in that RL area that really don't meet, uh, one unit an acre. So in those situations, we tried to, uh, include those in the RM, just so they would be conforming, uh, with the, the zone. I think they're getting the projector back up here. The, that, that part of the, uh, of the, of the map, really, that, if there was an easy part to the whole thing, that was the easy part. The remaining, and, and the really, the time-consuming element of this are all the other little colors you see on there. And I know from where you're sitting, that, that's hard to make out some of those. But essentially what we did was we looked at our existing zoning map, and we took a look at the uses that were allowed. Most of the uses under the existing zones that we have, like we talked about under that zoning here, and we just had, our specific uses allowed in a specific zone. Like, they may have a commercial zoning, but there's a conditional use permit for a specific use. What we tried to do for a lot of those commercial uses was find the zone where it was allowed, but at the same time, not allowing just a lot more uses out. Try to find the, the most restrictive of the zoning classifications, the commercial classifications, where it was still a permitted use, and then kind of go from there. That was kind of one of the ground rules that we used for that. Now, that's not to say that there weren't areas on there where, uh, you know, that, we may have, there may be somewhere in the middle of that yellow area, we may have found a small pocket of somewhere that was zoned industrial, that it didn't make a lot of sense for us to zone industrial. So we zoned it, proposed to zone it residential, just with the understanding it would be a non-conforming use. So that, there are some of those on, on the map as well. That's kind of the, the framework that we used for the zoning map. You'll see a few green parcels on there as well, uh, that's really our agricultural zone. Uh, you, you only see that in just a handful of places. We, you recall, under the original comp, comprehensive plan map we were looking at, there were a couple of areas that were, uh, recommended conservation area zoning, which would have been one unit per five acres. Uh, the planning commission ultimately didn't feel comfortable with that, and recommended that we tailor that back to just the, uh, one unit per acre, which, which we did. And, uh, but we still have the zone, the, the agricultural zone. There are a couple, like I said, not many, but there are a few parcels scattered here and there that do have that agricultural zone. That's just kind of a quick overview of, of the map itself. Uh, you'll also notice that, uh, you'll see some light blue areas on there, those are institutional zones. At this point, that's primarily county-owned property, schools, those kind of things. That, that's, again, what you're seeing here is a draft, we're, we're still gonna have some discussions about that. The purple areas that you see are industrial areas, you'll see kind of a, a large blob of it, if you will, for lack of a better word, where the, the landfill is, also where some of the, the county rock quarries are, uh, within Rutherford County. So that's just kind of an overview, a quick overview of the map. Uh, that being said, if we could pull up that slide with the community meetings, uh, we are gonna be hosting a series of four community meetings to talk about the zoning map, also the, the zoning ordinance that goes along with it. Uh, these will be open house style meetings, not gonna have a formal presentation as such. But, uh, staff will be there, we'll have the maps there. We're, we're planning also, we'll have a, an overview of this, but we also want to print some closer in shots of it, maybe like per, break the county in four pieces and kind of, uh, zoom down a little bit, show a little more detail. But you can see on Monday, uh, this coming Monday, next, next week, uh, we'll be meeting at the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Tuesday, the eighteenth, we'll be at Rockville Middle School. The following Monday, the twenty-fourth, we'll be at Oakland Middle School. And then that following Tuesday, we'll be at, uh, on October twenty-fifth, we'll be at Smyrna Town Center. All of those meetings will be from five until seven P.M. Again, not a formal presentation, more of a kind of come and go as you, as you desire. So we hope to be able to see, uh, some of you there. Uh, if not, of course, this doesn't substitute for the public hearings that will still be required in front of the planning commission and also the board of commissioners to consider this, there'll be opportunities for that. If after we discuss this, it turns out that more community meetings are necessary, then we'll certainly do that. But that, that just kind of gives you just a real quick overview of, of the map itself, uh, the process that we went through to come up with the classifications we did. Again, I, I do want to stress, this is a draft. This is not the final product, we have no doubt that there'll be changes to this. Uh, we want to know what people think about this. You know, I'm, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions regarding, uh, the different zones. It's a pretty significant change to what we currently do in our zoning. So we welcome those questions, we welcome any, uh, comments that there are out there. But, uh, at this point, I'll just kind of turn it over to the planning commissioners if, if you have any questions or anything.
Questions? Doug, after you have all these meetings, and then your plan is to come back and digest what you've got?
Yes, and, uh, we'll have two meetings before our, our next planning commission meeting. And, you know, I, I kind of figured we would report back to you at that point, just some of the comments or anything we've heard at that point.
Report back in November?
We still have two more meetings after that.
Report back in November?
Well, no, I mean, report back at the next planning commission meeting in two weeks from today.
Okay.
Just to let you know what we've heard so far. I mean, with the understanding we still have a couple of meetings to go, but.
And then, when are we looking to open it up here? What night are we looking for?
Well, that, at this point, uh, we're probably looking at a December public hearing, provided, uh, this continues to move forward. We have to notify the public with a, at least a thirty-day notice in a newspaper. So that will be, uh, the next step after these meetings, if, if it's determined that no other meetings are necessary. But, and, again, we're more than welcome as well, if, if someone has a, like, if different groups around the county wants to make a, a private presentation to them, we're more than, than welcome to do that, we're more than happy to do that, rather, as well. But, uh, but at this point, with the, the notice, with the thirty-day notice requirement, we'd be looking at a December meeting. We wouldn't be able to make a November, especially, I don't think we'd want to, being that we're just now. just now getting to these, the community meetings at this point anyway, so, in the workshop, right?
Okay. Questions, Ron?
Doug, when we were doing the comprehensive plan, we had a lot of discussion about the land use map, and those were recommended uses versus in stone uses. Talk to me a little bit about the relationship between the land use map and this map.
Well, as far as the map is concerned, again, the yellow and the orange areas, as far as density is concerned, we used the comprehensive plan land use map that we adopted, well, that you adopted, as the basis for determining where does the one acre area, one unit per acre area lie versus the one unit per three acres, which is kind of how we came up with that particular part of the map right there. The land use map itself doesn't necessarily make specific land use recommendations as far as what should be commercial, if it should be industrial, whatnot. What it did do was lay out guidelines as far as if you are going to have commercial development in certain character areas, for instance, the one unit per three acre area versus the one unit per one acre area. It did list certain densities at that point, where if you're going to have heavier type commercial or industrial-type zoning, it should be in these areas. Of course, there were also the recommendation of the nodes, if you recall, the rural center, as well as the employment and activity centers. What we have done, there is a small amount of that zoning on the ground, not a lot of it. The biggest area would be the Epsom Hill Road area, where there's already a good amount of existing commercial-industrial-type development out that way. We did zone a lot of that area as what's called the EAC, Employment Activity Center, which allows more of a mixture of uses. The areas within a couple of the more rural nodes, like Milton and Christiana, we did recommend some small areas where there was a mixture of land uses. The big reason we didn't put a lot of that on the ground at this point is that we really do feel that those areas need more detailed study before we just make recommendations for rezoning. What may work in Milton may not necessarily work in Last Cassis or in Christiana, and you kind of get the idea. So our proposal would be, after a new zoning map is instituted, that we would start going back and looking at some of those areas. But, and I may be getting off the, kind of the main thrust of your question, but as far as the specific land uses in the character areas that we identified, it didn't necessarily make land use recommendations. It gave us more guidelines to go by as far as density, intensity of the uses concerned, and we've tried to stay focused on that as we were looking at the different commercial zones. And of course, you know, some part of it, we're kind of hamstrung by what we've got out on the ground already. There may be areas that maybe today we would look at a little differently than was looked at five, 10 years ago. So there is a certain amount of that in there where it's, you know, it's kind of having to make a judgment call, and that's kind of goes back to what I was saying, there are some areas where there was an industrial use kind of in the middle of a residential area. It just didn't make sense to us to continue calling it industrial, just because of the other uses that could come along in that situation. So it made more sense to us to keep it residential, but it would still be able to operate under a non-conformal use, so. Did that answer your question?
It did, and that was actually, the second part of my question was going to be, did you look at the conditional use permits that we have in place now?
Yes.
And see what made sense and what doesn't?
Yes.
Sounds like you did.
Yes, we sure did. And essentially, what we tried to do was, tried to find the commercial zone that was the most restrictive commercial zone, but still allowed that use. So, for instance, trying to think of a good example, we zoned a lot of areas, there's three commercial classifications that we're looking at right now. There's the commercial neighborhood, which is the most restrictive, allows the least amount of commercial-type uses, it's more of a residential-compatible type uses. Commercial services, which is the mid-level, which allows more uses and larger uses, and then commercial general, which is pretty much like a commercial highway in Murphy's Borough, or something like that. I can only think of maybe one or two parcels, if that, that we actually zoned commercial general for car lots, and that was the big reason, for car sales. That was the only reason we looked at that. Anything else was either commercial neighborhood or commercial services. The same thing with industrial zoning. I think even the industrial zones that we did identify were all light industrial. I don't think we actually have any heavy industrial on the ground. The landfill, I'm sorry, yeah, and the quarries, yeah. Those are really the only things, the landfill and the quarries were the only things that we looked at for heavy industrial. Everything else was light industrial. So we really tried to understand that with this new zoning structure, you know, it's opening up the door for a lot more uses than what our current structure allows. And keeping that in mind, that's really how we were trying to develop this map, is understanding that when we open the door, we want to open it, but we don't want to open it too far.
Okay. Any other questions?
Most of those uses you're talking about would be subject to a rezoning, though, right? When, they're not a use by right.
Well, they would be, yes. I mean, and this would be basically a county-wide rezoning.
But only the parcels you've zoned.
I'm sorry.
Only the parcels you've zoned out of way now, right? I mean...
Yeah, no, now, yeah, are you asking, did we just decide to go out and get some areas and start zoning the commercial?
Right. I kind of want everybody clear, you know?
Right, right, no, we didn't do that.
Yeah.
No, we just, we were just looking at the uses that were currently zoned commercial. Now, along with that, we also looked at the property assessor's data on our computer system, the GIS system, and there's a number of parcels out there that may be taxed commercially, but for whatever reason, are zoned residentially. Now, we had a handful of those to look at, and we actually, we just took the county vehicle and went out and started looking at some of them. And some of them, a lot of the situations that we found were, they were duplexes, you know, and if they're duplexes, they're taxed commercially, even if they're not commercial land uses. So those were fairly easy to deal with. But we did find a few, not many, but we did find a few that were zoned residential, and I mean, we deal with that sometime here. There'll be some property that was zoned residentially, but there was a conditional use permit for a commercial use on it. In those situations, if the commercial use still existed, kind of similar to what we did with the Couchville Pike property a couple of months back, we just said, let's just go ahead and zone it commercial under the new ordinance, if we felt it made sense. You know, again, there were some, a few properties here and there that it just didn't make sense to have it zoned that way, we just allowed it to continue, we proposed it to continue being used under a non-conforming type situation, still zoning it residential. So, yeah, we did look at the existing commercial uses, commercial zoning, but we also looked at the assessor's data to find out what was out there that was zoned, or that was classified as commercially taxed, but may not have been commercially zoned.
Okay. Mike?
Doug, are you in communication with Holly Sears, Industrial Development Board Director in the chamber?
I mean, I've talked with her, not this, about this specifically. Now, we've, as part of our getting the word out about these meetings, you know, we're sending a notice to different stakeholders, and the chamber is one of those that was on our list to contact, so.
I would think Holly and you together would be most beneficial to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as, as they're trying to bring commercial and industrial projects into the county that we certainly have a place for.
That's a very, very good point. We actually, we've, the chamber's been on our mailing list for a while during this process, you know, for the comprehensive plan even.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Doug, we go?
Just, yeah, that's really only the report I had for that. The other, last thing I did want to bring up to you, and, well, we'll put the, well, sorry. We'll leave those dates up there, just for, in case someone wants to write them down. But I passed out a memo to you prior to the meeting regarding training opportunity that we were setting up. It'll be for November 4th. We'll start at 9:00 AM. We'll meet in our mezzanine meeting room in the Goldstein Building. This will go as for part of your public chapter 862 training requirements for 2011. We're going to have Sam Edwards, who's the executive director and legal counsel for the Greater Nashville Regional Council. He's going to give an overview of planning commission and board of zoning appeal responsibilities. You'll recall, about a year or so ago, Sam came and spoke to us, too, and very interesting, very knowledgeable speaker. Plus, he can also kind of give you an idea of some of the legislation coming down from the state that might impact some of the activities that we do. We'll also be, planning engineering staff will also give an overview. We might give another overview of the zoning resolution zoning map as we move forward with that, but I've asked Mr. Corbett also to kind of give an overview of stormwater regulations and issues in the county. Those are things that we do typically deal with at planning commission meetings, so I wanted you to be aware of that. And then, it would all be capped off by a webinar, which is sponsored by the Small Town and Rural Planning Division, which is entitled "Design Guidelines for Small Towns and Rural Places." This would dovetail very nicely into the discussion we were having regarding rural centers, and, you know, like the Milton's and the Christianas in the county for that. That's, that'll be, that actually starts at 12:00, so we'll start at 9:00 and probably wrap up about 1:30. We'd encourage you to kind of bring like a bag lunch or something like that for the meeting. If, I've already talked to one person who wasn't going to be able to make the meeting, but you'll see on there as well that there is a website, that there's an archive of just several different webcasts that they've done in the past. Essentially, all you need is a Windows Media Player, you double-click on it, it pretty much runs everything itself, the PowerPoint's on there, the sound, you know, the presentation itself is there, and each one lasts about an hour and a half, and my recollection is that they're all free. So there's no charge to any of that. So if you want to view some of those, all you have to do is just go ahead and watch them. There's no quiz or anything that I'll give you after it's done, so don't have to worry about that. But just let me know which ones you watched, that we'll have a little thing for you to sign, saying that you did watch them, and then we'll apply that to your yearly credit. So if you have questions, just let me know. We also have CD-ROMs in our office that can be viewed for credit as well, or listened to anyway. I don't think there's any video associated with them, but we do have those. And if you can't, or not able to do that at your office or at your home, we'll be more than happy to set up a workstation where you can come in and view it in our office. So I'll be happy to answer any questions with that, but that's pretty much all I had for today.
Okay. Do you have anything, Doug?
Nothing.
Anyone?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
An opportunity to educate you a little bit. The Terry Hurst, like, review and approve today, understanding that the landowner is wide, they mentioned some of those lots may be landlocked. What happens at that point? Who's responsible for getting aggressive and aggressive into a lot?
Well...
How long are those?
Yeah. There's law, yeah, there's case law that states, and I'm kind of, you know, getting in on Josh's territory over here, so I won't say too, too much, but basically, it says that, you know, there has to be an access somewhere, and, you know, sometimes that has to be, do you want to take that, Josh, kind of motion in here?
I can answer your question. There is a statute that says if a landowner is landlocked, they can file a petition with the chancery court, and the court is obligated to lay out an easement across property that will get that landowner to a public road.